Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. I hope you had a very good break. It's now time for our special session. Monica Fröller, my co- emcee, is now sitting there. I'm here alone now. We'll be monitoring a various inspiring session on women's leadership and empowerment. In this session, we have female leaders who will discuss the meaning and role of women's leadership and offer advice to women in crisis as well as the international communities. The floor is all yours, Monica.
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, I couldn't be more excited. I'm sharing the stage with amazing female leaders from Africa, from Europe, and from Asia. We will get perspectives that cover women empowerment, but also women resilience in crisis. It is my privilege and honor, dear Excellency Graca Maschel, to sit on stage with you. She doesn't actually need an introduction because she has been introduced before, but let me say she's the vice chair of the elders, former First Lady of Mozambique and former First Lady of South Africa, and seriously, a full force of wisdom. With me as well is her Excellency Kwang Ha Kang. I'm afraid my pronunciation in Korean still is lacking my experience. She was the former Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Korea. And with us as well is her Excellency Maria Castillo Fernandez, the EU Ambassador to South Korea. Please give the ladies a round of applause. In the conversation that we just heard between Secretary General Ban Ki-moon and former President of Austria-Haynes Fischer, we heard about the crisis that the world is currently confronted with. And when crisis hits, women are the most vulnerable. Women are often affected more than men. There was a very wise lady called Maria Holzberg. She was the UN Women Humanitarian and Disaster Risk Advisor, and she said, "Crisis always exacerbates gender inequality." So when we think of the climate crisis, obviously, it is women who are at the forefront of the risks. Women have to keep their households up and running. Women have to fetch the water. They have to get the firewood. They have to care for their families and their communities. And it's often them who are economically most vulnerable to climate change. They are losing their livelihoods, but also because of their families and vulnerabilities, migration for them is not so easy, and they can't flee. If we are thinking of the COVID pandemic, again, women are at the forefront. They were the forefront of the health workers, the medical staffers, again, caring for their families. And the COVID crisis, we all know, exacerbated the differences of social well-being between those that have and those that don't have. And then when we think of war and conflict, women are the ones that are suffering from violence and abuse often the most. And yet, they are not sitting at the decision-making tables of the peacemaking necessarily afterwards. Fortunately, today, we have examples of ladies who have very strong voices and who have shed the power of femininity and of equality in the various regions that they are representing. My dear Graca Maschel, you are an inspiration to all of us, to many of us, and I want to pose the first question to you. You have been a leader of your kind in Africa and beyond. And you have done that in peace and conflict resolution and mediation. You shared the voices of other women, be it in Mozambique, be it in Kenya, be it in other areas. I would like to ask you, you have a unique perspective. Why is it critically important for women to be involved in resolving conflict?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the question. I think we learned in practice that in a situation of conflict, we should turn, I mean, the vulnerabilities, which you quite rightly described, the vulnerabilities of women, into agency and leadership. So what we have learned from our struggle, for instance, for liberation, we made sure that women wouldn't be at the back, but they would be at the side of everyone in decision-making. This is a big lesson of the liberation struggle. And you will know that just a proof of that, most of the countries in Africa which have best representation in political leadership, particularly in parliament, et cetera, are former liberation movements. I'm not going to describe in detail, but that's the lesson which we are practicing in terms of women's leadership. But to take the example, for instance, of Kenya, where I was together with Kofi Annan, one of the mediators, the first step we took when we were to start the mediation was to create a women's forum. We brought women, listened to them even before the formal mediation had started, to say, "Tell us, what's going on here? And how can we bring the two, the so-called warring parts, together?" And precisely because women are the ones who take the worst of the conflict, they came with the best of advice of how we could resolve and how we could be effective in mediation. So let's transform our understanding of the place and the power women have in conflict resolution. And they shape, in fact, better than anyone else, what is behind, I mean, the conflict, more than what is formally presented at the table. They understand much better than anyone. They are the ones who can even in talking to one another to build the bridges. We had the strength to convince the warring parts that it was in their interest to end that conflict because of the wisdom we got from women. Thirdly, because I don't have much time, I want to say that we have been working. I chair one of the organizations in Africa which is working with conflict prevention, conflict resolution, and peace building accord. It's based in South Africa in KwaZulu-Natal. We are training, we are training women to be better mediators. We are training young people to be better participants in the conflict prevention and conflict resolution and even in peace building. We do this because these are the two groups which are strongly interested in peace. Young people are the ones who fight both sides. They die. They are killed many times with no deep knowledge of why this conflict is happening. Women are having all the losses which you mentioned, so they have only to gain with a peace resolution. So this is, I will say in short, let's transform women not as victims, make them powerful, positive, constructive force of peace prevention, I mean, conflict prevention, conflict resolution, and peace building.
Wonderfully said. And your idea about the women's fora, yes, round of applause.
If I can say something?
Yeah, please.
For instance, I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting that whether it's UN, whether it's African Union, any initiative or peace building, it should be mandatory to have women as mediators in equal position with men. It should be mandatory. It should come from the Secretary General themselves or the President of African Union, anyone in a regional initiative, even in a national initiative. It should be mandatory to give space and voice and power to women when it comes to conflict mediation and peace building.
Fully agreed. Bravo. Not only when it comes to conflict and peace building, also when it comes to crisis. And I want to pose my next question to Minister Kang, because it was very evident that during the COVID-19 pandemic, a crisis that struck the whole world, it was women leaders who took a specific role. Can you elaborate a bit more on the female leadership?
Well, I think, you know, we're so inspired by what Graca said about the importance of women being at the center of crisis response, crisis management. I have very little to add, but one very concrete example in my own country in the COVID-19 pandemic crisis. I mean, you spoke about Angela Merkel, you spoke about Jacinda Ardern, and there are many other women leaders who were touted as successful managers of this crisis that suddenly struck, and nobody knew how the virus was going to evolve. So we were in a period of deep uncertainty, which meant a great deal of fear on the proper part of the public. So the key element of leadership at that point was trust, a leader who won the trust of the people in this very uncertain, fearful stage. And I think women leaders who were touted as successful all demonstrated that trust-building leadership to varying extent. We had a woman leader who was exceptionally good at that. We had a woman heading our disease control center. Her name is Chang Eun Kyung, and I think our success very much owes to her leadership at the time. She took the lead to develop the first PCR test kits out of her own initiative because she knew that this was going to be critical. So we were one of the first countries to develop this test kit, which is the first thing you need when you're trying to track down the virus. So we've become, you know, as foreign minister, I can't tell you how many phone calls I received from my counterparts asking if they could get their hands on this test kit. But not only that, she went on the screen every day to brief the public about what was going on, what we knew, what we don't know, what we were doing, and what we were planning to do. So that daily communication and the transparency and the openness that brought about that response was critical to the people trusting what the government was doing. And of course, there were still lots of criticism, lots of discontent, lots of complaints, but at least the public knew that the government was trying our very best in this very uncertain and fearful time. So I think trust-building leadership is critical in crisis management. I would proposition, and this may be controversial, I pose a question. Are women leaders more trustful than men? Are women more honest than men? My experience, definitely, yes. Because, well, you know, there was, a couple of years ago, there was a book called Lean In, written by a top leader at Facebook, Shara, what was her name? But the point of the book is that women, men oversell, women undersell. So when the job requires a certain qualification, men don't have second thoughts about saying, "Well, I don't have that," but I can say I have that. Women who don't have that, meet that qualification, stand back. So if the qualification says that you need a master's degree, the men typically will say, "Well, I didn't get the degree, but I did the full course load, so I can say that I have the degree." Men, including my, women, will not do that. We tend to lean back, and that may be a fault. I think we should not be shy about the qualification that we do have, not overselling, but not underselling. I think women sell what we have, and we need to do that better. Chang Eun Kyung's leadership was exceptionally trust-building, but she herself is not an overseller of that kind of a leadership. And I think that's, we need to do a better job. But I think, you know, the trust-building element of women's ability to communicate, to touch both that reason part, the mental part, as the emotional part, which is, which is both very important, especially when times are uncertain as, at so many levels here in current times. I think, you know, more women leaders, certainly, but it, that doesn't come just out of the blue in a crisis strike and you suddenly see women, but it has to be built in normal times. I mean, gender equality, women's empowerment have to be a constant investment in mundane times so that they are available when crisis strikes. They are in positions of leadership when crisis strike, and we had that with Chang Eun Kyung with COVID-19. We also have an excellent leadership of peace negotiator women in East Asia, in the Philippines. In 2014, there was a comprehensive agreement on the Bangsamoro region of the Philippines, which put a rest to decades of Islamic insurgency in the Philippines. And the chief negotiator and the signatory to the peace accord was a woman. But her getting there, and not only her, there are many women leaders involved in various tracks of that peace negotiation, track one, track two, track three, and there was an organicness to how the peace process moved forward. And her leadership was instrumental, but her leadership just didn't happen out of the blue. Philippine had a long tradition of women being in visible leadership position. I think the point, and I think Graca was also trying to make, there needs to be a conceptual breakthrough. When you are peace negotiating, you're not just trying to end the violence, end the military conflict, you are also trying to build the peace, right? And if you want to do that, you have to address the vulnerabilities, the injustices, the discriminations that happened, that accumulated the discord, the discontent, the social strife that broke out into conflict. So putting an end to the conflict is not just about stopping the violence, it's about digging into the deep-seated vulnerabilities and discrimination. And of course, when you get at that level, you need women at the table.
Absolutely. And I hope, ladies and gentlemen, you're taking notes of the wisdom. Yes, a round of applause. We have heard trust is crucial. We have heard that not underselling, but rather at equal, at eye level, tackling certain challenges. And we have also heard about involving women, mandatory, maybe even, in peace-building missions, in mediation, in conflict prevention. All of these are very, very important lessons. Thank you. Let me turn to you, your Excellency Castillo Fernandez. I would like to listen more to the European perspective. Europe right now is in crisis. There is a war of aggression ranging, Russia has aggressively attacked Ukraine. And I'm wondering about your perspective as the European Union Ambassador here in Korea to the various crises that we are facing and what women leadership means in that context.
Well, thank you very much, Monica, and I'm very honored to be here with Grace and Guwen. I bring a very humble perspective, if I may say so. Although Europe in this current crisis hit by climate pandemic, a war in Ukraine, we also have, and we have seen the power of women there very clearly. We've mentioned some of the European heads of state that at the beginning of the crisis of the pandemic were there, very resolvive, very decisive. But we also have seen, and you have seen it in Europe, when the pandemic struck, all the governments went from each of them on their own side. They completely tried to find solutions for their own nations, which was certainly very important. But then there was Ursula van der Leyen, who decided, "Hey, we cannot go all our own way, we have to find a consensus." And I think that one of the important things, and former Minister Kang mentioned it, is the way to build consensus. And in Europe, it's very important, you have to build consensus at 27 to manage and to go. And now we have, for the first time, one woman at the center at the European Commission, and even four, last year, said she was the first on her list of most powerful women in the world. But she took very swift action. In the pandemic, he organized this COVID respond team on the March 2, 2020, very quickly when he saw that countries were going in all directions and tried to bring them in and say, "No, let's go in a coordinated." So I think women bring in that case a bit more collectiveness rather than individualness. We bring a bit more collaboration rather than competition, although, of course, there are always very women who like to compete, but more coaching, I think, rather than commanding. We don't like to command, but sometimes we have to be strong. We have to show strength in a way. And consensus being deal, especially in Europe, is very, very important. Look at climate. And on climate crisis, I would like to mention, and I think it was mentioned by former President of Austria, the idea of the younger girls, how they are pushing in Europe, the change in climate action, the movements reaching out to local through student groups there, and they push the politicians. He said himself, "They are pushing us, we have to do more." And that is very important. And we don't see that here in Asia still, in Korea certainly not yet, but I think it's cooking. It's something that is, that is coming. But the other big crisis we have, the war in Ukraine, this brutal aggression of Putin towards Ukraine, and very thankful of Secretary General Ban Ki-moon, always supportive and very frank, open words toward what is happening in Ukraine, because there we see women. I mean, we see all the, of course, the men are fighting. Also, women are fighting in the front, but there are women who are really making an enormous effort, receiving the brunt of this brutal war. But they were the ones who had to flee with the children, leave the man to fight. So they are the ones, the bulk of the refugees, also the displaced people inside Ukraine. But we see them making an enormous effort on the whole humanitarian assistance in the country. This is, this is incredible, because they are there underground, helping with health services, with provision of food, reaching out to all the displaced people and leading all these efforts, because in the war is not only the fighting, you have to have, the whole country has to continue living. And you have all these women getting together, leaving the jobs they had, and just helping, helping. And that compassion and that way of, okay, let's help, we have to get together, trying to work together, this is certainly very, very important. On the other hand, we also know they are, and this is very alarming, growing evidence of sexual and all gender-based brutal violence in the war. I mean, that is really, and I hope that we, of course, have enough evidence. And these are the women collecting evidence themselves, very hard evidence, to try to put afterwards and have justice, because at the end, you know, they are really suffering in different ways. They are not killed, but they suffer enormously. And that we have, if really one day we have to stop this cruelty that there is in a, sometimes in a logical way it seems, towards women in every country, in every region, in Africa, rapes, domestic violence, also in my country, in Europe. In Europe, we have enormous domestic violence, in Spain, levels. And you said it very well, Graca. I mean, I know for personal reasons as well, so why do we have to accept that? And that is certainly very powerful. We see, and I come back to Ukraine, the effort that First Lady Olenna Selenska is doing, reaching out as her husband cannot go. She's the one coming out to Davos, to all the different parliaments, to speak out, to tell the world what is happening, and to ask for efforts, efforts like sending children that have cancer out of Ukraine to be supported, or sending books of Ukrainian lecture to all the Ukrainians who, I think, are out in different countries to study, to continue study, education, don't stop education, very, very important, and so many efforts. Prosecutor General Irina Venediktova is leading the work on documentation of cases on sexual violence. Deputy Prime Minister Irina Vereshku is also negotiating and managing all the evacuations to the occupied zones. When you, when Kirsten was liberated, they had to take everyone out and displaced person. I mean, we are really in war in Europe. And on the one hand, you have Ursula helping very much, the support and the efforts in Ukraine at all levels, pushing all the countries to do more. And on the other side, you have in Ukraine so many powerful women, and we also have one here, Kristanna, the wife of the Ambassador to Ukraine, and I know she's doing also a lot of work here, working to help his country. So we have good testimonies, but we have, and you have better, you know, better than us, so many cases in other parts of the world, where women are key in the efforts of war.
Thank you, your Excellency. This gives me the exact segue to ask her Excellency Graca Maschel. There is such a wealth of African knowledge in conflict resolution, and many women like Limak Bawey or Ellen Johnson Serleaf contributed to peace bringing. And there are many cases, not only Liberia, but of course also we have the lessons that we have from Kenya, from Zimbabwe, from Burundi. And maybe you, as an elder, can illustrate some of these stories for the benefit of the audience of how African lessons can influence the global community.
Perhaps before I answer directly your question, I just wanted to follow a little bit what the ambassador was saying.
Oh, please, yes, of course.
I think we need to have, I mean, from the media side, to give much more visibility to the contributions of women. All these stories we are listening to here, they don't come to the eyes of the public. You have to be very attentive and to go deep to see what women are doing, the importance of what they are making as a contribution, and to value the contribution of women. And because we live in a world where the media has so much power in influencing, I mean, what we believe it is happening, I think there's an important role to educate our media, to look at the human side of contribution to conflict resolution, and quite rightly to consensus building, to really this kind of collaborating way in which it's happening from community to national levels, because there's a lot of very good work which is being done by women in conflict situations, but it's not known enough, it's not being valued enough. I just wanted to make this point. But the question is, what you are asking about the experiences in Africa, let me try to use the example of Burundi. It's, it's a, it was a conflict which was mostly ethnic, and then somehow in Kenya as well. So you have a lot of emotional, I mean, involvement in how the interpretation of the root causes of the conflict is. And with this very strong emotional charging, people lose the ability to see what is really the root causes and how they should be addressed. And I'm taking quite clearly the contribution of the former foreign minister. Now, in Burundi, what we did with the accord, it was to bring women to South Africa, out of the heat of the conflict, bring them to South Africa, and try to make them look into the eyes of each other from different conflicts. I mean, because women can also take part of the conflict, and they can be very active. And that was the issue, to say, "Look, is it really in your interest to strengthen the differences between you as ethnic groups? Or let's try to find what do you have in common much more than what are the difference amongst you?" And it was an exercise which really helped the women to see that it was not their war, it was somebody else's war, it was not women, it was not in the interest of their families, and they build the bridges to embrace one another. And they build the bridges to embrace one another. And when they go back to Burundi, they became really a strong force of saying, this war is nonsensical. It doesn't make sense to us as people. But secondly, they developed a movement which confronted really in a positive way the warring parts, including the political leadership of the country, which because of difference of political parties, they were also taking sides. And they came to build the space in the middle of protection of life, protection of the family, protection of co-wideness in their community. And they even did better. While the process of negotiations was happening, they established a delegation which went to Arusha. The negotiations were taking place in Arusha. And while the one who was facilitating the discussion, in fact, it was Nelson Mandela. So they went to him to say, why is it you are sitting here and you are negotiating with these men and we don't have a seat? And they demanded to be represented in the negotiate. And they presented a list of things which they wanted these negotiations and the end of the conflict to take into account, so that all parties should sign up too before they say the agreement has been reached. They became, and then of course, then they had lots of people supporting them. They become a force even to establish the basic rules of the new constitution, which should be drafted to address in long term the differences which existed within society, which were the root cause again, and they had created this long resentments, etc., etc. So they influenced the drafting of the constitution, they influenced the electoral system even. I mean, we don't hear of what it is now, the situation in Burundi. But the good thing is, of all the weaknesses, I mean, the root causes not only were resolved during negotiations, but they are entrenched into the constitution and even in the electoral system. So it's one good example which we learned from, with Kofi Annan and Ben Mokapa, we learned for, from, to help Kenya to do the same. And although the implementation in Kenya is like, for instance, they knew, the Kenyan women knew that if it was not entrenched in the constitution, that at least thirty percent of parliamentarians should be women. And they managed to do this. It was really civil society which made this possible. But then when it came to the first elections, they said, oh, no, we are not ready. I mean, they came into, they postponed. And it's women who again came into the streets and they say, you can't postpone a right which we have conquered, etc. So it's to give example that you have to be very clear about, yes, again, how to stop conflict, but also how to build the basis for what is going to come after the conflict, to rebuild the society, etc., etc. I'm not saying this is perfect. What I'm saying is that you need to be, we as women, we have to be much better organized when there's a conflict. We have to be much more organized. We have to establish clearly what are the priorities of our participation. It's not women for the sake of women. It's what do we put on the table? What do we demand? Which is immediate, but also which is short, medium and long term. We need to look very clearly to social issues, I mean, to address the issues. From the time they sign, they have to be clear about what they are going to do about education, what they are going to do about health for women, what they are going to do about gender-based violence. And these things had to come as instruments which are to be taken into account from whoever is going to be in power. It's not only about those who are fighting, no. Whoever is come to power later. And we still have challenges. But let me say, for instance, in Kenya, one of the reasons why we had much less conflict in the last elections is because of the basis which had been, I mean, established and entrenched during the mediation, as a result of the mediation which came from 2008. There was some level of violence, but nothing, absolutely nothing comparable to what had happened before. So I'm saying, women have to be much more organized. Women have to be much more strategic. They have to have clarity on the priorities which they want to change. They want to effect a change in short, medium and long term. And there are institutions which can help in terms of building the capacity and building the technical capacity, not only of negotiating, but exactly to know what are the demands which speaks to women. And finally, I want to say something is, we need to educate us ourselves as women, really to be careful not to be part of the conflict. Because it's also a temptation. We belong to political parties, okay? And when it comes to the negotiations, sometimes we forget what is the interest of women as such, but we fight the wars of the conflict, those who are, I mean, at the top. We also sometimes as women, we release a lot of our own capacity and you put it quite rightly, that we need to acknowledge and to assert, to assert our presence, our rights and our capacity, really. It means education of ourselves, not to be always playing, I mean, the second part, I mean, to be behind. It takes time for you to understand that it is my right, it is my space, and no one is going to take this space because it belongs to me. And so there's a lot of work to do with women as individuals, women as organizations, even women as leaders. And I have to tell you, I mean, at this age, I have learned things which I didn't know when I was much younger. Perhaps I wouldn't be speaking the way I do now, but it has to take time to build yourself, to acknowledge your value and to put your value on the table, to prove that women have value. They are bringing value. They are not asking only, they are not asking because it's their right. They have to prove why it is our right. So that's part of also, particularly when positions are very extreme as conflict, and particularly when there are those elements which are, I mean, very emotional. Let me finish by saying, for instance, we are really now confronted with this tragedy in Ukraine. And I don't want to be doing the political analysis. I want to do the social analysis. You know what is happening? We forgot, all of us, we forgot that in a question of perhaps a week or ten days in Ukrainia, we had millions, literally millions of people displaced. It was phenomenal. It had never happened before. I mean, you'd have displacement, you would have, but it happened slowly. But in this war, it was in a very short time, and it was short time which affected millions. This is one. Second, we learned also that, yeah, even Europe behaved much better this time to receive the refugees, etc., in terms of organizing, etc., etc. And then, because there was a good work in receiving them into the receiving countries, now we forgot that there are millions of people, you see, who are still in Europe in a certainty of what is going to happen to them and to their children if they are living in a country where they don't speak the language, etc. There's a huge effort of adaptation which they have to do. So those social issues, they lose, I mean, prominence when we concentrate mostly in the political solutions. That's what I want to say. We need to bring also the social issues, which women can bring better than, I'm sorry to say, than men.
So I hope that the man will not leave the audience and that they stay with us.
We are not attacking.
We are not.
No, we are not attacking.
We need to work together.
We are saying that the change which has to take place in how we deal with situations of conflict.
And I saw Ambassador Castillo Fernandez nodding quite a bit, because it's exactly, I know what you feel strongly about, civil society in Ukraine is stepping up to the challenge. And please tell us more about exactly elaborating on Madame Marshall.
I think that the civil society is reorganizing, is led by women in Ukraine and in many parts of the world. It's led by women. And there, they are really, you know, as I said, reaching out to people who cannot, don't have food, don't have health systems, educating people in their own houses, helping the displaced people. We also are helping in Europe. There is a lot of civil society that is mobilized to keep the refugees there and to make them still feel at home, because we're going to celebrate one year of the start of the war in some weeks. And as they say, they don't have future. You remember when at the United Nations Security Council in March, in April 11, we had the NGO La Strada Ukrainia, who came there to speak about the work that was done by civil society organizations, and that is important. But if I can say, I think we all need to be more role models. And this can be any of us who are here, in any of our roles, we need to give more inspiration. I remember before coming to Korea, I was posted in Malaysia. And there, the role of woman in the Muslim world is very important. They are, really, there is a lot of civil society organizations working very much in a very low-key way to try to help, help women. They just want to help each other. One day, they came to me and they say, Ambassador, could you give us your Sunday afternoon and come to speak, sit down for tea with women who are suffering domestic violence, who are refugees from Rohingya, Afghan, Afghanistan, and even Malays. Can you just stay with us? And I went there and it was one of the most inspiring experience I had professionally. And why? Because you sit with, you listen, we are good listeners. We have to listen. You mentioned that, Foreign Minister Kang. We have to listen, we have a capacity to listen. And we sat there, just listened. And then we went back to it and said, listen, this happened also to me, or this. And then they identify with you. And three months after that experience, which then I came home and I felt completely humble and say, oh, my God, you know, there are so many things around us that we don't know. Three months after, I was in an Italian restaurant. And then suddenly a waitress came and I look at her, I say, I know this person, I know this person. I didn't remember where. And after the dinner, she comes to me and she said, you remember me from the shelter? So one of the women said, you inspire me so much, I managed to get out of the hole. And just that, that is for me the best thing I did in Malaysia, in terms of human, just to give a bit of your time and you can make a difference in the life of one person. And I think that that is exactly, I think, we are all role models in everything we do and we need to have more of those. And try to really push ourselves, because we can do better, we can inspire everyone. Thank you.
Speaking of role models, I think Minister Kang, you are a role model for so many of us, because you have served as the first and only female Korean Foreign Minister. You have also been, of course, UN responsible for many portfolios at the level of USG and ASG. So you are a role model. Dear Minister Kang, what does it take to get more women into high-level decision-making positions from your perspective?
Well, I think certainly women who are in that position of being a role model have to keep that ladder there for younger women to climb. Some women leaders snatch up that leader after they've made it, leaving very little opportunities for other women to grow up. So don't pull that ladder, leave it there and encourage other women to make the climb. We also need more men leaders to be good leaders. And by good, I mean, men who see the self-interest, the sustainability in gender equality and women's empowerment. You know, we see all over the world societies that are democratic, prosperous, are societies that have made many advances in gender equality. We see states that are fragile, that are on the verge of conflict or are in conflict, are exactly those societies where women are second-class citizens. The lesson is so clear, that gender equality has to be a part of your everyday socio-economic fabric for society to be peaceful and prosperous. It's a no-brainer. The evidence is so clearly there. And so we need men leaders to see that and practice that and make decisions that encourage that at the policy level, at social economic level, at the cultural level, to do their part to make that a habit of the heart. I always called culture, what is culture? It's the habit of the heart, what people have ingrained in their psyche that they practice every day. How do you get that? Education, societal programs? There's a number of things that you need to do. But at the end, we need women leaders, to be more women leaders, we need more women role models, we need more good men leaders to be supportive of gender equality and women's empowerment. After all, I was in that position because the president decided that she has it, she has it, what it takes to serve in that position. So I would say, more good men leaders is a very important part of the equation.
Wonderful. I have a follow-up question, though. Is there something that you would consider as an advice to your younger self? What would you advise your younger self? If you're traveling back in time and maybe we have future foreign ministers of Korea sitting in the audience, what would you advise yourself?
For current university students, you mean? Well, I think, looking back on my college days, things have changed greatly at so many levels, at the level of gender equality too. I grew up, I went through university thinking lesser of myself than my male colleagues, very frankly, because the system didn't support me. But I think we have made structural systemic changes that the young women of today can make the most of. So don't be shy, don't undersell yourself, as I said. Don't oversell, because I think there's a danger in that as well, especially in this age when we're so bothered by fake news, you know, disinformation, misinformation, this post-truth era, which I'm bothered, because a lot of people seem to think, well, we are in post-truth and so be it. Well, it can't be so be it. We need to go back to the age of truth. And I do believe that women's leadership of transparency, openness, communication, you know, selling but not overselling, but we can do a little bit better on the underselling side. So be objective, be factual, be truthful. There's enormous opportunity out there and you have the potential to become the second, third, fourth foreign ministers of this very vibrant country.
As we have little time remaining, I would like to pose a similar question to you, Ambassador Castillo Fernandez. What would be the one thing that you want the audience to leave with? What is your advice to the young listeners?
Well, don't be afraid, as former minister said, be passion. Be passion of what you do. We have to put a bit of passion in our lives. We have to put, you know, a bit of, as Her Excellency Gràcia Marshall said, mind and hearts together. I like that. We have perhaps more open hearts. Let's put more passion also on your lives. Don't be afraid to do it. afraid to do it.
Thank you. The last word is with you, what do you want the audience to leave with?
I think my two fellow panelists have said the best of what I would tell myself much younger. It's really to work on yourself, sorry, it's to build, to work on your self-confidence. I have to say, sometimes it doesn't come across, that sometimes, even now, I have moments of self-doubt, and we are not absolutely sure that, am I the right person to do these kind of things? And as women, we do have a lot of self-doubt, and we have to fight for this. So to the young generation who are listening to us, one thing is, you will not be able to overcome that self-doubt alone. You need to be working with your colleagues, and together you support one another, particularly while you are still at university. This is a fertile space in which you can build friendships, you can encourage one another, you can learn from one another, and you build a sense of a collective affirmation and assertiveness that, yes, you are the right person. And yes, you are the one who can make also effective change, even if it's not alone, but together. And I have been strengthened in my life, I have been strengthened with the collectives I have worked with, and they encourage you, they give you the strength which on your own you won't be able to develop as such. So self-doubt, fight against it, work with others, make sure that you give and take with your colleagues, with your friends, to build that ability to believe in you, but to believe in your generation, to be able to effect the changes which are required. And then you'll see, instead of one Minister of Foreign Affairs, you'll have many, but not million Ministers of Foreign Affairs, you'll have much more people representing South Korea in different bodies. And that's why you manage to have Ban Ki-moon as Secretary General of the UN. You have to think, yes, what else you cannot do after that? And representing your country, representing women of the world, it is something you have to work on, it will not work, it will not happen by itself.
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, an amazing panel of powerful ladies benefiting hopefully all of us in the future. Thank you for this wonderful session.
Thank you very much for a wonderful session. I personally have a three-year-old daughter, and I think this is a talk that I would like to show a recorded version of when she grows up to actually understand this information. So I think this was a wonderful session, and finally, it's time for lunch. So we're going to have a one-hour break, right now it's 12:40, so we will return at 1:30 PM back here after your lunch. For those of you invited with the green stickers, you are invited to the Cheong Hall at the Commons for lunch, so please join us, and we'll see you at 1:40. Thank you.